It is 5:30. We're really getting the meeting called over. I'd like to thank everybody for being here with us tonight. It's our April 20th Board meeting, so thank you again for being here. Before we go into the opening of the meeting, just a couple of quick announcements before we dive right in. First is a huge congratulations to our Pickens County High School baseball team. They are the region champs and have their final home game tomorrow night, which is senior night here at Dunn Field at the high school. So if you want one more chance to see them in the regular season, go play. Tomorrow night will be your night. I don't know the time of the game.
Uh, 5:30.
5:30. Ms. Lisa will leave at 4:00.
Okay.
But they will have their final home game and then they'll start competing in the state championship, so I want to make sure we recognize them. Also, the county today was recognized at Northwest Georgia Regional Commission as a, from the AARP, is a network of eight friendly states and communities. Our region was one of six in the entire country that every single county within the region receives that recognition, so they had staff from the AARP come to present to every county in the state. So just a couple items that weren't on the agenda, wanted to make sure that we put out there for everyone. With that in mind, I want to ask Mr. Kenny Woodard to lead us in our invitation and then...
Let's pray. I'm also having a precious Father, we just want to give you thanks for today. Father, we just want to lift our hands up, you know, because we love you. We thank you for everything you do for each and every one of us in this county. Father, we just ask you to watch over our first responders, our 911 people, watch over everybody at public service, everybody that does anything in this county, Father. Just bless them, Father. We just ask you to take our leaders here, Father, and give them the knowledge and the courage and the strength to do what they're supposed to do, Father. In your name we pray. Amen.
If you'd join me at the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is amendments to the agenda. We do have two amendments that I know of. One is to remove item 8C, which is the approval of a debt book contract. That item has been removed as far as being necessary. So we'll remove that from our agenda. And then the second from that is to add item C under 10 action items, and that's the appointment of the Secretary to the Bureau of Labor and Food and粮 Board. And so you can note of that. That's the only two amendments I have. Ms. Lisa, do we have any others that you're aware?
No, sir. I think that's it.
Do either of you have any other to me? Okay. We'll move on from that to our employee recognitions. Rather than starting here and us walking back and forth a couple times, I think I'm going to ask the commissioners to just join me on the front, and then we'll do the employee recognitions on the front one at a time. Make it a little bit easier. So before we do our employee recognitions, I'm going to recognize one other person. We have a special guest with us tonight that's here with our youth leadership program. One of their requirements as they go through youth leadership is to attend one of the public meetings. She may share a name with one of our commissioners, but we have Ms. Lily Tippin, so would come up and join us for a picture. I asked her if I could imagine. A rising superstar, and we're very proud of Ms. Lily. She's doing a great job in that class that we graduated from, for just a couple weeks. You get a smile, though.
Oh, yeah.
I think somehow she's become a volunteer fireman, a youth leadership, and goes to school, too, so she's doing fantastic, yes. First employee that we will actually call up to recognize, this one's actually a pretty good one. So 20-year, it's a resolution for 20 years of faithful service, Mr. Richard Garrett. Awesome, it's you. Thank you for coming with us. We got a pick-a-camera in his mouth. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. And our next is a 10-year of faithful service, Ms. Lindsey Ray. Ms. Lindsey's working for 15 years, so that really counts for 20 probably.
I get it.
You want to join us in a little good picture? Congratulations. Appreciate it very much. So it's always an honor to get recognized employees for all the years of service. All right. So we will move on through the agenda. I know if you looked at it and saw how long it is, it looks like we're going to be here forever, but some of these are just to kind of highlight what's on the items. Under our consent agenda, as you can see, that we have had a plethora of proclamations this past month. We've had the Great American Cleanup 2023, which was designating the month of April 2023 as the Great American Cleanup, but we actually had it as the, for Pickens County. We also had a proclamation for Child Abuse Awareness Month that was signed early this month by myself and Mayor Lawrence. Also, in addition to that, it's Safe Digging Month. We apparently have a lot of things that go on in the month of April, so we've signed a proclamation on April the 3rd for Safe Digging. One of the best ones we got to do was to celebrate our 911 dispatchers. The National Public Safety Telecommunications Week was last week. They got to eat for free, I think, every day, so we appreciate them very much, all of our dispatchers and the fantastic work that they do. So we got to celebrate. I don't know why you only get a week when all these others are for a month, but we did at least get you a full week out of it. The next one was North Georgia Mountain Crisis Network. We had a proclamation just yesterday that was for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, that the month of April was Sexual Assault Awareness Month. That one's not quite as exciting, but it's pretty phenomenal, the group of people that are working to try to fight that. And the week of April 23rd through 29th is Crime Victims Rights Week. So we had a proclamation yesterday for that one as well. So we did have quite a few in the month of April, and I think that we'll probably have a couple more in May, and then the fall is the other season where they all pile up. So we'll have another stack to present as we go forward from there. Under old business, I do not have any old business before us tonight. Ms. Lisa, am I missing anything there?
No, sir. We have none.
All right. Under new business is the approval for a bid for water system infrastructure services. We had a bid opening on... I don't have the date right here in front of me. Was it March 25th, Philip?
3/25.
Yeah.
Okay. Bid opening on March 25th to do a project on Mullenix Road. We only received one bid on the project. It is for 18,000 feet of 8-inch water main, 18 fire hydrant assemblies, one rock crossing and, or Rock Creek Crossing, and then connect, two connections onto the existing line, and then to come back and grass that area. The total project cost was $428,300. This is one of the projects that we had designated from ARPA funds that we've had set aside from the American Rescue Plan Act grant that was received, and so we did receive that one bid. It was open at that time, so I would entertain a motion from anyone that would like to move forward with this water project.
So moved. Second motion.
And a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, obviously, I probably should have said who that's awarded to. The one bid came from T. Stanko Incorporated, so Mr. Tim Stansfield. Here's one. Next item on our agenda is approval for a bid for recycled grass crusher, glass crusher. Sometimes you, I've got new glasses and I haven't got used to how to read with them from my phone, so that's probably not the only time I'll do that tonight. We did receive a grant from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. Ms. Kenny Woodard had worked with the staff there and received a grant in order to pay for the 100% funding of this project. We did receive the cost in a bid for $131,000. Came from Mandela Products out of New York. It's a unique product that's not available to go out into a lot of places, but it's an 18-foot wide feeder with an 18-inch belt, 22 feet long, a pulverizer that will actually crush grass down to...
More glass.
Just trying to... This takes me back to Red Rhythm, when I was trying to do that proclamation. This is the bid that we have received. Like I said, it is a grant, it's fully grant funded, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the bid on that and to engage the...
Make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. As we said at the beginning, we're going to remove item C from our agenda tonight. No longer needed to move forward with that one. We'll move on to item D, and that is the approved of Liberty Tire Recycling Agreement. This is an agreement with Liberty Tire Recycling to be able to come up and process the tires. The cost per load or ton is $1,984.82 to go through. This is someone that can come and pick those up and haul those off. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the contract from Liberty Tire Recycling and authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
So moved. Second motion.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Pickens and Nelson for tree service. This is an agreement for us to help maintain any tree overgrowth in the roads with our Public Works Department, that they can go into the town, or the city of Nelson, and work with them to help assist in that. I think that our staff has met with their staff as well, and I adopted details. I think Nelson put it on their agenda just recently, and with their approval on their end. If you have any questions, we can go through that, but I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the intergovernmental agreement between us and Nelson.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions?
Wait to do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of a lease with State Properties Commission. This is a lease for probation offices located in the courthouse, Suites P1, P2. It's just an annual renewal of the lease. None of the terms changed. It's just to continue to allow probation, the state probation office to occupy their space there. And I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the lease so we can move forward with getting that renewed.
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is to actually go through our quarterly finance reports. We have Mr. William Fox to come up and present our budget report.
This will be our first reporting for our quarter... Come on, sorry.
Do you have your glasses?
Yes, I do. It will be our quarter one reporting for fiscal year 2023. As you can see, for our revenues for quarter one of 2023, we received 4.7 million. That's just slightly lower than quarter one of '22 at 4.7. For the special E911 funds, we received 60,000, which is just slightly increased from '22. For our proprietary funds was 992,000, which is just slightly less than 2022, which was 996,000. To kind of go through the general fund revenue versus '22 to '23, and '23 for taxes, we had a slight, well, shouldn't say slight increase, we had an increase of 270,000, which was contributed to 183,000 for current taxes, an increase of 92,000 for TAVT tax. License and permits, we had a slight decrease from '22, which was 15,000 pertaining to building permits. For intergovernmental funding, we had a slight decrease in this based on some audit compliance that we had from '22. Our L-MIC of 604,000 was being co-mingled into our general fund, and it should actually be in our SLOST, so that's why you see that difference there. The LEGFR grant, that's actually through the Sheriff's Department, we received that in '22, but not in '23. For charges for services, 674,000, that was just a timing difference related to the ambulance fees. Funds and forfeitures, just a slight decrease of 8,473, and that's contributed to these different court areas that are the jail, the corporate court, magistrate, probate, crime victim, and the juvenile court. Interest income, we had an increase of 6,000, which was related to the general fund. The miscellaneous was a decrease also related to, we had some grant money that came in from FEMA that actually needed to be transferred over to SLOST. So a few of those expenditures were expensed out of SLOST, so we were reimbursing SLOST for those expenses. Our other finance sources was $2,500, the general fund paid for some expenses that belonged to hotel motel tax. Other fund revenue for the E911 fund, like I said earlier, was just slightly higher, was 1,409, was related to prepaid wireless. Water department was $5,019. That was a combination of water charges that decreased by 44,000, meter installer installations that was an increase for 30,000, tap fee for 9,000, and reimbursement of damaged property of 2,000, and a miscellaneous of 1,000. Airport was a slight decrease of 9,542. That was a combination of land lease of 2,000 plus received in '23. Aviation fuel was down by 8,000, but we had a slight increase of $776 for jet fuel. Here we have a slide that we were going to show that's kind of new to be presented to the board, in 2020 SLOST. This shows you a chart over the last three years of the revenue that we received for SLOST. So you can see in '21, we received 1.5 million. For '22, we received 1.9 million, and for fiscal year '23, we received 2 million for the quarter. For our governmental expenditures for the quarter, you can see that we were just slightly above the 25% that we should be at for the three months within the first quarter. We were actually at 25.21% of the budget versus back in '22, we were at 20.16%. So to kind of explain that a little, why we're just slightly over the 25%, I'd like to discuss the purchase order encumbrance. We actually enforced training to get our department training. We encouraged our departments to do a purchase order for a full year versus maybe a month. In '22, you will see a difference where they were doing a purchase order to encumber funds or purchases that would be paid in the future. And this helps them with managing their budget to be able to make sure that they stay within their budget and also help us with cash flow to understand that we do have this expense that will be paid out at a later date. And so that percentage in '22, or sorry, in '23, we encouraged all the departments to do a blanket PO for the year, and also it saves time and hours for each department to process that paperwork, also when the invoices come into the department, and finance department, to be able to match that invoice up to a purchase order to reduce some of the labor hours there. But to kind of just give you an example of purchase orders is, basically, we do a purchase order to encumber for goods and services that are going to be paid out on a future date versus, you know, try to also manage cash flow, so we're able to know that we do have this expenditure that may, will be coming out at some date. It may not be this month, but it could be within three or four months. So with that being said, I'd like to go back to my governmental slides to kind of explain that's where we were saying that we're supposed to be at 25% for this quarter. That's why you slightly see 25.2%, that's related to the encumbrances of those purchase orders. And the problem with that is, is our system, when you look at the reports in the year-to-date column, it includes those encumbrances along with the expenditures. And so it's hard to tell when you look at the reports that those reports, you think you've expended, you've expensed all of that today, but actually you have some expenditures and you have your year-to-date. So as we go through the expenditures for quarter 2023, the general government expenditures were at 26.8, and as you can see, just to kind of point that out again, is that in the commission and general admin area, it's 30.38. That's because we encumbered multiple purchase orders within those departments. And you will see that as we go through the other slides as well. For judicial expenditures, we are at 24.7% of the budget. For public safety expenditures, we're at 24.6% of the budget. For public works, we are at 22.06% of the budget. Health and welfare expenditures for the quarter is 93.74% of the budget, and I just have to commend that this area is they have really gotten aboard in encumbering the purchase orders for the year. Culture and recreation expenditures is 25.58%. You can see within the programs, program sports area, we've encumbered quite a few purchase orders there as well. Housing and development expenditures, we're at 22.04%. The E911 expenditures, we're at 14.04% of the budget. The enterprise and proprietary, um, sorry, I completely lost there. Privateer funds, we're at 32.71% of the budget. The water department as well, they're at 35% of the budget. They also have gotten aboard with encumbering purchase orders for the year as well. Our American Rescue Plan, at the end of 2022, we had 3.5 million remaining out of the 6.2 million that we have received. In '23, for the quarter, we've already spent 1.4 of that ARPA funding, and at the end of the quarter three, we are at 2 million remaining on that fund. The YIOT reports were distributed to the department heads on April 14, and inside your packet on Section 5, we have some amendments that we need to have approved by the board. There's been a fire department that had an increase for a divation that they have received, 2,000. I think it was 2,500. I'm sorry, I don't have that one in front of me.
2,000.
Okay, 2,000. Sorry for that. And we have also quite, there's been several grants that were received within the grant judicial area, and we would like to increase their revenue for those areas as well, to be able to increase the revenue for the additional grant money that they have received.
Now I'll give just a slight explanation when you go through and review all our finance policies as to when things go before the board and when they're done internally. Anytime revenue is increased, budget, wait, over what was budgeted, and we know it's coming, it's not a just the amendment, it's a whole thing to be done. Or anytime funds are being transferred from one fund to another. So for instance, the general fund's the number one fund, or the general fund's the judicial grants fund, or, last person, those require a board vote to amend the budgets within the funds, that they can be done internally, but whenever it goes from one fund to the other, it requires a board vote. We can do these either one at a time, or we can do them collectively. I think there's a total of three, four, five, six, seven, and so I'll go through since I've got them right here in front of me. Just detail the amounts on each of them. The fire department admin is an increase in the budget of $2,000, that's one she just described. The judicial grants that came through, Ms. Norris, and send over the grant reimbursement, there was an additional increase that came into that that was of $3,058. The third is another judicial grant, is the VC state grant. It was an increase of $4,244. The grant reimbursement for another one of the judicial grants, let's try and see if it says specifically which one, had a $5,678 increase. Under drug court, there's a $9,533 increase. That was a state grant that was received. And another state grant for the judicial side had a total of, we had an increase of 41,000 to the DC state grant, 20,000 for professional services, and then 21,000 for small equipment that was granted as well. These are all on the budget increase side. Juvenile court, there was an increase of $12,000 that came from House Bill 911, paid by the state. And we have a decrease in funds and forfeitures. It was a budget error on the budget season, and it was a funds and forfeitures of $2,500 that we need to reduce the budget by, $2,500 to make it consistent with the actual budget amount. So if we can collectively vote on the amendments together, unless you see need to separate those out, if you can separate them...
We're all grant funded, right?
Yes. All but the last one, where it was just a correction of the budget. Okay. Well, then I will call on, ask it for a motion that we approve these budget amendments for the 2023 budget.
Make a motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented.
Make a motion, a second.
A second.
Make a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wood. I watched her go back, so that means I'm about to have to go all the way back forward because I had it, even that it, I didn't tell you that part, sorry. All right, so we'll move on from our quarterly finance report to action items. Action items, we have two. Under item A, approval of minutes, March 16th, we had a regular meeting and work session. Those minutes were forwarded to each member of the commission prior to tonight, if we have had a chance to read through those. If so, I'd like to ask for a motion that we approve the minutes from our last month's meetings.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item under item B is our rezones. We'll go through each of the different rezones individually. First rezone that we have is, trying to double check that they match up with what's on my sheet and what's on the agenda, that way I don't help out at work. Switch to my reading glasses. The, it's a request for change in land use classification for parcels 052D, 145 in Tate, Georgia. Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on January 26th from Mr. David Markley Jr. requesting a change in use classification from RR to highway business on a .349 acre tract located in 4770, Highway 53 East in Tate. The planning commission met and after reviewing the application and receiving staff reports, voted for yes, zero, no to approve the rezone request on this .349 acre tract. Do I have a motion to follow the recommendation of the planning commission and approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so we'll move on to the next. The next is request for change in land use classification on parcels 032, 005, 103, and 032, 005, 102 on Pleasant Hill Road. Planning Commission received an application on January 27th from Brian Warner on behalf of CRPD Properties requesting a change in land use classification of agriculture to estate residential on the three-acre tract located on Pleasant Hill Road. If approved, it is to build a house. A public hearing was held on the 13th of March. The planning commission voted for yes, zero, no to approve the rezone request. Do I have a motion to follow the recommendation of the planning commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Third rezone request that we have is a request for change in land use classification on parcel 013... 013, 032, 002, located at 11395, Highway 136 West in Talkin' Rock. Planning and Development Office received an application on January 27 from Raymond and Deborah Roberts requesting a change from Highway Business to small agriculture on a small, on a six-acre tract located at 11395, 136 West in Talkin' Rock. The purpose was for mortgage, in order to obtain a mortgage on the property. Planning Commission met on the 13th of March and voted for yes, zero, no to approve the request. Do I have a motion to follow the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Our final rezone request is request in land use classification on parcels 012, 023, 001 on Swine Ridge Road in Talkin' Rock. Planning and Development Office received a completed application on January 27 from Michelle Hamilton requesting a change in the land use classification of agriculture to a state residential on a 15-acre tract located on Swine Bridge Road. If approved, it's to split into lots. A public hearing was held on March 13 regarding the application and a vote of for yes, zero, no to approve the rezone request. Do I have a move to follow our motion to follow the recommendation of the planning commission?
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Switch your glasses back. All right, so we'll move on from our rezones to guest comments. Do I have any guest comments from anyone that's with us? Yes, sir.
Been quiet too long, too three weeks.
Sorry, I do have an amendment to the agenda. I moved right past item C. Sorry, I didn't have it on the screen. You get a chance in just a second to not be quiet for too long. Item C, which was our amendment to add, was the appointment of Secretary for the Bureau One Board. We'd had a change in staffing within the office. One of the positions within our Planning and Development Office is designated to serve as the Secretary of the Bureau One Board and do all the administrative work for that board. I would like to recommend the appointment of Ms. Ashley Craig from that office to serve as Secretary of the Bureau One Board. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve Ms. Ashley to serve in that capacity. Do I have a second?
I will second your motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, conversation? Yes, she is actually old enough to help. Not much, but she is old. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Craig, or Mike the Hill, Ms. Craig. All right, Mr. Dobbs, now that we're back to our guest comment section.
Easily would have covered this under a work session, but as your departments are telling you all the needs that were coming in, the need, you see it every day, and it's not getting easier to drive around town. We just finished taking our application for homestead for 2023. We had 783 new homestead applications for 2023. In 2022, we had 700. Things are changing, as everyone is noticing, but that's a demographic figure that people can look at and see. Single-family residential housing seems to be the popular way to go.
Wow. Thank you. I think...no, I appreciate it. And that includes all of Pickens County. I think that's something for all of us to understand. That's not just unincorporated, but incorporated as well. All right, any other guest comments? With no other guest comments, then I'm gonna bring up our executive session. Tonight, we have three different points to go into executive session on behalf of ones to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or retaining of a public officer, employee, or to interview candidates for executive positions. Second item is to discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, authorize ordering an appraisal related to the acquisition or disposal of real estate, enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property subject to the approval in a subsequent public vote, or enter into an option to purchase, dispose, or lease real estate subject to an approval in a subsequent public vote. The third item is to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the county, or an officer or employer, or in which the officer or employer may be directly involved. So with those three items on the table, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll go into executive session. Thank you. We'll be back out.